You're watching ABC News Ghana, we told you that we'll bring you the Youth Connect live, which is happening at the Sunyani Technical University Auditorium, where the Vice President is currently. We'll go straight to Sunyani so we can take the feed from there.
Hello Epifania, we are at the Sunyani Technical University, where the Vice President is meeting the youth and other stakeholders to discuss what he has for the country. He's elected President come December 7th. This is the Youth Connect and here we say that it is bold solutions for our future. I have with me Rita Amuakua and Areme Yao Ahmed. I'll be speaking with them on their expectations for tonight's Youth Connect. Rita Amuakua is a Community Police Assistant here in Sunyani. And Areme Yao is the Ghana National Union of Technical Students Ambassador at the National. Rita, good evening.
Good evening.
Community police, how many years now?
Over one year now.
Over one year now. What do you think about it? Are you a part of the organization?
Yes, I'm a member.
Before what do you think about it?
I was a member of SHS, I was there for like three months. Then I was told to stop. I didn't pay any attention, I was just there to join the organization. Before I even joined, I was a member.
What about you? Areme Yao, Ghana National Union of Technical Students as their ambassador, what are some of the things that you do to make sure that the work of the technical university students is easy?
Yes, actually, thank you very much for this opportunity. You know, Ghana National Union of Technical Students, as we say, professionals with integrity, is actually our slogan and what we seek is to, well, our main core objective is to seek for the rule of law for students, I mean the technical students in Ghana. And we have observed that most of the technical students in Ghana, when it comes to the job market, the attention is always shifted to the traditional university graduates rather than the technical students, which is not fair. So we hope and believe that when Baumia comes into power, he will have a fair share with the job market, as far as I know.
I'll come back to you for more of your expectations. When you may Vice President say, or two Francs, or two Francs, or two Francs, or two Francs, again, I don't want to say it, I want to say it.
I don't want to say it anymore. I said, I'm going to tell you, I'm going to tell you, I'm going to tell you.
Okay. Areme Yao, you mentioned that more of attention is given to the traditional universities. Tonight, you are going to hear from the Vice President and flag bearer of the NPP. What are some of the things that you expect him to say? And what qualities are you looking for him to bring on board that will be good for you guys at technical university?
Yes, thank you so much. Actually, for Ghana to prosper, more attention should be given to the technical know-how. Yes, and because we have seen China excelling and they are skyrocketing in technology, because they pay attention to the technical than the traditional, you know, the university students. And even if you observe, most of the countries that are doing well, they are doing the practical. But here, our focus is just on the theoretical, so which is not fair. So I expect Baumia to actually shift his attention to the technical students and that is the only way forward for Ghana.
Thank you so much, thank you so much. Yeah, so these are some expectations from the youth ahead of tonight's conversation. The Vice President is in, he is going to speak with the youth on the Youth Connect. Earlier, we spoke with some nurses, we spoke with some nurses and they also mentioned about their allowances. Very, very soon, we will hear what he has for them. So tonight, it's the Youth Connect here at the Sunyani Technical University. Earlier, the Vice President was, the Vice President was at the dialogue, the third annual dialogue, that looked at sustainability and small-scale mining. He mentioned a couple of things and I'm sure that as the day goes by, as the evening goes by, we'll be playing videos for you to know what he spoke about. So Epifania, we are here at Sunyani Technical University. It's the Youth Connect and it is bold solutions for our future.
Thank you so much, Abna. So we're still going to carry on the live feed from the auditorium so we can actually hear what the Vice President has to say. But Abna will definitely come back to you. Before that, I mean before the Vice President actually went to the Youth Connect Auditorium, he went for a meet and greet, he interacted with some marketmen, which has become his mode of operation. As he mentioned, he wants to meet the people on the Atef. He wants to meet them eyeball to eyeball. And you know, if you watched yesterday, you realize that he does this in every region he goes to. He goes to the major market, he interacts with the people. And he does a door-to-door campaign. So let's look at some of the footages from that. So you can see earlier on, when he actually went to the markets, Sunyani 1 and 2 market, and then he also went to the Fia Pray market, where he went to interact with the people, meeting them, getting to know what their problems were, to be able to better present them with the right solutions and then bring them what they actually needed. Because, I mean, we're moving the campaign this time from just the podiums and the rallies to where the people are, see what they go through and understand them. So when they are crafting solutions for them, he'll be able to come up with the right solutions. Like he said, bold solutions for our future. You can see the excitement on the faces of some of the people as they interacted with him because everybody wants a chance to, you know, shake the hand of the Vice President. And he doesn't come every day. You know, you don't wake up and think that, oh, I'm going to see him today. So for him to actually take the campaign through this dynamic, it's actually changing the way politics is being done, as opposed to the initial way of standing on podiums and then having the people gather in the sun for long hours. This actually sending a different message that I'm coming to meet you at your point of need, more like I care about you. And the question is, are the people going to receive the message that he's carrying across in the same manner? Are they going to listen? And is that going to influence their decision come December 7th? So you can actually see the people excited to see him. We would also take some key highlights that we had earlier today. I mean, he spoke at some places and then he took some key messages. We want to also look at that for you, so do stay with us, we'll bring it to you right now. So these are the key campaign messages that we had. This is from some of his regional tour. Now, today, we're looking at the one he had from yesterday. And this was from Guaso. So he said, "I promise you, the Allah is here to stay and I will continue paying the Allah to you." This was in response to the queries the nursing students put across to him when they were disturbed about the continuance of the allowance they were receiving. Now, on T-Vet, he also said, "We've invested 6 billion Ghana cedis in T-Vet and we have introduced free T-Vet." This was to the youth at the Youth Connect program in Gosso, where they have originally just yesterday. He also spoke on the One Student, One Tablet. And yes, this was also at the Youth Connect. He said, "We're going to extend one student, one tablet from secondary schools, which we initially know it to be to tertiary institutions." Just that with that, they give you a timeframe. You know, the government covers a setting amount of money and then you're supposed to pay the rest over a setting period of time. Now, on the mining sector, this was when he was meeting with a half-regional House of Chiefs in Gosso, where they have originally just yesterday. He also said, "We'll make sure that when we discover gold, the ownership of the gold is going to be 100% Ghanaian." On scholarships, he said, "Persons with disabilities will be given scholarships to attend tertiary institutions." So I mean, if you're somebody who has a disability or you live with a disability, you get the opportunity to go to tertiary institutions, study, pursue the course of your choice, free of charge. And on the issue of transport, he says he wants urban public transport to move towards electric vehicles, which will reduce transport fares by at least 40%. Now, this is going to bring some excitement or not, but I mean, let's look at how it's going to be carried out. On the mining sector, he also said, "I will establish a minerals development bank, which will aid those in the mining sector." Now, this is based on his vision of formalizing the small-scale mining sector. Now, on solar power, he said, "Instead of using oil and gas, Ghana should move towards solar power." "I want to implement a policy to generate 2,000 megawatts of power, which is more than half our consumption." So these are some of the key messages, key campaign messages we're actually bringing to you because I mean, we feel that these things stand out. For whom I watch, oh, he went here, he went there. But what is he actually carrying across? What is the message? What does he intend to do? So that's why we bring you some of these key campaign messages so you can actually follow along and know that these are some of the key points, the vision he has for Ghana, the bold solutions for our future that he's presenting to us. Now, let's take a look at some of the videos of the speeches he had earlier.
He said, "Ghana is called sense independence." He said, "It's difficult because..." Maybe it's bad, but it's important in the governance of the country and it is their problem. So, we say, "We are reviewing section 63D of the Chief Tennessee Act to give more powers to the chiefs so the chiefs can help government in the governance of the country." Because, he said, "Even managing your areas becomes difficult without the powers." So, we say, "We need more powers." But that means, he said, "Increasing the payments to the chiefs, the allowances to the chiefs, not only parliament chiefs." Because he said, "Chair, Parliament Chiefs, Manifesto Committee, with the recommendation, we say, "Let's pay the chiefs living allowances, allowances they can live on." Because, we say, "You must have the resources to do the work." Public transport, so the same problem, fuel imports. It's expensive, GPRT, so increasing transport prices. Again, we want to say, "Urban public transport, we move towards electric vehicles." He said, "We also started moving towards electric vehicles." Our electric vehicles, we move the transport phase back down by at least 40%. He said, "Ghana should move towards solar power." We use more solar power rather than oil and gas. And he said, "We implemented a policy to generate 2,000 megawatts of solar power." We have former gold and other minerals. And I know, we say, "Ghana, we are changing natural resource management." Natural resource management, so we say, "So far, your reserves, your royalties on the reserves are equal. But we say, "Ghana, we have 100% ownership, that is the difference." He said, "The key, we say, is exploration." We say, "Geological Survey Department, we say, "Exploration." So we say, "We are exploring." We have deposits, then the concessions, we say, "100% ownership by Ghanaians." He said, "We have more, we have more, we have more." We say, "We have more capital to do the mining." And he said, "Minerals Development Bank, we said, "A great development bank." So that the Minerals Development Bank, we say, "We are mining." We say, "Persons with disability, so we are..." We are because of disability, they can't go and do a lot of work to get any money for tertiary education. But they are very smart, they are very bright. And persons with disability, we have more scholarship to go to tertiary institutions and they will be able to attend free tertiary institutions through scholarships.
Still watching ABC News Ghana, we're going straight to the auditorium of the Sunyani Technical University, where the Vice President is ready to address the youth.
Let's think deeply, reflect soberly before we go and cast our vote, our thumb for the next president. And I can tell you, the best president for this time, the Ghana we need and the leader we need to take us to the next level is Dr Mahmoud Baumia. We are here, we are here. As we invite the leader of our party, the flag bearer of the new Patriotic Party, the Vice President of the Republic of Ghana and the incoming president, Insha Allah, His Excellency Dr Al-Hadi Mahmoud Baumia. But we are here, we are here.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Our Regional Minister, Minister for Employment, Labor Relations and Patients, our National Chairman, Regional Chairman, Chairman of Brunei DC, our Youth Commander, Former General Secretary John Buidoo, Former General Secretary Kobnagia Japon, Former Health Minister Kwekuajima Menou, Campaign Vice Chairman Fred Owari, our Regional Executives and MMDCs, our Members of Parliament who are here, our colleagues from nursing, midwifery training colleges and teacher training colleges, our tailors and beauticians, our carpenters and electricians, our painters and everybody here present for this Youth Connect, I greet all of you. We are here. Ghana is called 2024. We call parliamentary and presidential primaries for NPP. We call, you know, we are not a dictator, we are NPP, Franco, and we call 2024 election. We are here, you know, we are here, we are here. We are here, we are here. And we say, "NPP, we are paying for Franco to..." We say, "NPP, we are here, we are here." But we say, "I mean, it is possible, it is possible." We say, "We are here." We say, "We are here." We say, "I am here." We say, "I am here." We pay taxi driver pay, we pay by day pay, we pay cleaner pay. We are here, we are here. And I am here, I am here. We are here, Deputy Governor, we are here, Vice President of the Republic of Ghana. And we are here, we are here. And we are here, we are here. We are here, we are here. We, 2024 election, we are here. We are here, any former president, we are here, we are here. And yes, we are here, we are here. We are here, we are here. And yes, we are here, we are here. And yes, we are here, we are here. We are here, we are here. And yes, we are here, we are here. Four years, we are here, four years, we are here. And yes, unemployment, we are here, we are here. We are here, we are here. We are here, we are here. We have nursing training allowance, we are here. We are cancelling nursing training allowance. We say, "We are here, we are here." We say, "We are here, we are here." We say, "There will be regular payment of your Allah." There will be regular payment of your Allah. There will be regular payment. Former president, we are here, president, teacher training allowance, we are here. We are here, we are here. We say, "We are here, we are here." We have teacher training allowance, we are here. Arabic teachers allowance, we are here. We are here, we are here. We are here, we are here. We are here, opposition. We say, "We are here, we are here." We have free senior high school education, we are here. We say, "We are here, we are here." We have free senior high school education, we are here. We are here, we are here. We are here, we are here. Free senior high school education, we are here. From 800,000 school children, students, senior high school, and I could do 1.4 million students in senior high school. We are here, we are here. Better results from WACI exam. Instead of saying, "We are praising the tanky senior high school students." Former presidents say, "We are copying, we are here." What do you want to do? What do you want to do? We are here, we are here. The best three students in West Africa exams from Ghana. We are here, African Ghana. WACI, the whole of West Africa Exams Council, three best students, African Ghana. And we are here, we are here. So we say, "We are here." We are here, we are here. It's impossible. We are here, we are here. It is possible. It is possible. We say, "We have one constituency, one ambulance." We say, "We are here." We are here, we are here. We have one constituency, one ambulance. You see, we have drones, we deliver medicines. We have drones, we are here. We are here, we are here. We are here, we are here. We see, we see, we have drones, we are here. We are here. They say drones, they are delivering medicines and vaccines and blood to 2,800 health centers in Ghana, 2,800. And then Ghana, we are here, the largest medical drone delivery service in the whole world, the whole world, the whole world, Ghana is number one. Just a few months ago, the drone services, there were six centers. Every center, every day, a flying hundred flights, air-cock, air-cock, saving lives. Just a few months ago, we were here, we were here. From Ghana to San Francisco to have a drone flight operating team in San Francisco. Because Ghana, there was major expertise in flight operations for drones. And we say, "And all the drone operating centers, only Ghanaians, 100% of the operators are Ghanaians." We are here, we are here. Yes, and we say, "We are here." Also in the health sector, we say, "Nurses are here." All the, all the teaching hospitals, regional hospitals, district hospitals. We have networked all of them under the e-health policy led by Kwekuajiman Menou, MP for Doma Central. Kwekuajiman Menou, e-health, we are here. And then, we are here, we are here. Any district hospital, any regional hospital, we are here, we are here. We are here, we are here. Uhiya fold abium. Uko Kolibua, ubema o ID number. Ye boswa computer no so na o health records yina abaso. Ya ye over three hundred hospitals. By next year, ye be cover all the hospitals in Ghana. And anywhere you go, your health record will be digital. Digital ne ye recall. Ye kase ye di Ghana card eh ba no ye anfa ba. Ye anfa ba. Ghana card no na ndisi fo omo country, omo support esep. Ma omo omonko register enji Ghana card no. Na omon tiya se. And then Ghana card no uo Ghana kada. Eh ma o unique identity. Sa Ghana kadi eh ye suunku. Ye koo linki Ghana card no with the International Civil Aviation Organization Wakana da. Eh chresi uko abrochre enea. Na o passport eh ira. Ubeti miya fa Ghana card, Afro plane abagana ha. Afro plane abagana ha. And then ye wo akolawa Ghana. Oko weyina. Ye di ni Ghana card number. Abama sa akorano. Any birth certificate number ama sa akorano. Sa na yeye na abrochre sa pepe peso na yeye no wa Ghana. Na adiasuunkua eh be shia se next year. Inshishafufu amewono is about passport application. Passport application. Medinshishafufu eh ba. From next year nyami addum. Uo Ghana kada. Eh hiya se ubaya another passport application biu. Eh hiya se ubaya another passport application. Because ye wo information m'inyana eh wa Ghana card no so. Enti upe passporta. Na wa ko website no so udi Ghana card number achaho. Na wetria with momo ofi. M'inyana no no omo be printi passport no eh diabro ohi. Eh ye simple, eh ye simple. They toss no. Yesi ye di Agenda 111 beba ye anfa ba. Ye di hundred and eleven hospitals ne ye si. Every district be ya eh ye hospital. Every district. Ye be wiye nyami addum by four, about forty to fifty this year. Ne wiye the rest next year. Ye nyami addum. Yesi ye be ye no omo siye enti miye. Ba ye timiye ye. Ye timiye ye. Yesi ye di mobile money interoperability eh ba. Omo siye enti miye. Yesi ye beye. Ubeti miya fa eh o momo account. Na wa manisika akko o bank account. Enya sa. From one telku MTN, ubeti miya mani akko another telku. Eh tel se lanase eh tel tigo. Unti miye ubeti miye. Ghana is the first country in the whole of Africa to have mobile money interoperability. Na weti miye ye sa diye no. Enti ye di new ideas na ye reba Ghana. And then it is digital Ghana in ayeko. Digitalization has taken hold. Anka ye 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 be di omanpeyindada ekia. Anka ye mko bibia. Anka na ya kasu tasuo bibia na ye genalo. Na unti miye bibia male. And then ye di STEM school education abagana. Ye besu sa. Ye Tivet education no so. Ya investi more in Tivets than any government in the history of Ghana. Any government in the history of Ghana. And then your cocoa farmers have had the highest ever cocoa price in Ghana. Two thousand and seventy cities pay back. Ye agric sector is improving. Rice imports is down by forty-five percent. Rice import is down by forty-five percent. The ports are paperless. And then ubeti miya gina. Aha, na wa ko a renewi o national health insurance on your mobile phone. Enya sa. On your mobile phone, you can renew or you can enroll. Uo ka ubeti miya to insurance on your mobile phone. Eh hiya se uko insurance company biu. So Ghana is moving forward. Ghana is moving into the digital age. Inshishafufu ayade ba. Ya next year ye be starti. Say ye be digitalizing lands m'inyana. Say de obiye abeti miya checking land ownership on your mobile phone. Udi coordination is to her. You can tell who owns the land. Obiye m'cosisi usi otong asasi ma o. But he doesn't own the land. Ye di digitalization no eh ba. But addiaswa mede baninshifufu ayade ba. Eh ba bua ye nginamu nginamu nse. Abrochre uye juma. Ye ma o u sika tria uju salaria. Eh one thousand dollars sa. Utmito niema almost ten thousand dollars. Ghana ha. Ye ma o one thousand cities sa unti mito niemata ten thousand cities. Ubeti mi. Di enti neban sa. It is the credit system. Ah eh wo abrochre omo wa credit system ah eh ye juma. Ye diye ye credit system no eh ye juma. Adenti na abrochre diye eh ye juma. Abrochre omo wa addia ye fre no individual credit scoring. So systems no obiye enti miya ni credit score. Enti uko gi creditor ye bechier u credit score. U credit score eh ye good credit score. Ye be ma o credit. Eh bad wa na ye ma o credit. Enya sa eh ye guru na interest rate no eh be bafo. But sansa Ghana na ye ni credit score no. Obiye was a bad borrower. Everybody was assumed to be bad. Enti ye ngina ye nyakredit, interest rate no eh ye high. Eh but say de ye di Ghana card no aba any systems no. Ye di abana ya linki m'inyana no. Ghana, this year, ye be shia se. We will also have credit scoring for the first time in our history. For the first time in our history. Ente diye mekwa kolonchi. Na obiye eh hunemfaso. Na uo Ghana kada ubeti miya koho. Na wa ko she wa u credit score. Because you are linking all the databases. Obiye beti miya nya. And sa no ba credit eh be ho ho na interest rate no so abafu. They tosswa mepe se meye mebe ye opa manpeyian. Mepe se me move Ghana towards solar power generation. Solar power generation. We will move Ghana to solar power. Solar power no mepe se ye di two thousand megawatts eh be shim. That is about half hour consumption. So ye yane sa no electricity prices will fall by at least fifty percent eh be bafo. And solar no nyamina idea cheye. And so we are going to get at least two thousand megawatts, half hour consumption eh di akaho. Also, persons with disabilities will get free tertiary education under my government. They will all get free tertiary education. Persons with disabilities, tertiary education. Eh du omo duwa ye di mama omo akko. Free tertiary education. Na yenyana eh ye ne hunfaso na ya bua persons with disabilities so akaho. Eh be high special needs teachers. So a thousand special needs teachers. Na abua nipaa omo wa special needs no eh wa Ghana. Ye be kengi ye import duty regime. Ye import duty regime no. Say say we are moving to a flat tax regime. So udi niema eh ba. You know exactly the tax you are going to pay. Forty foot container, you know. Twenty foot container, you know. Enya so eh niema nebe duha. Ne ya ma o different price. The price will be there for everybody to see. When you order, that's when you pay. You also pay without any changes. The second policy eh ba. Togo, omo import duty new. We will make sure that we align. Young import duty will not be higher than Togo's import duty. We will make sure that our import duty is lower or the maximum will be the same. Ye yane sa no smuggling na eh kotogo no eh bejai. And then we will get all of it into Ghana. Na ya ye. About jobs swa. Eh juma, ye ye government so far ya created two point one million jobs in seven years. The highest of any government in the history of Ghana. Two point one million jobs. Omanpeyidada no, he was creating unemployment. He wasn't creating jobs. Na ye ye created two point one million jobs in seven years. Mudi tumi no shemisaa. I will help and will do more and more and more to help all of you. To help all of you. M'ini nse ye si and the 111 hospitals. M'inyana be ye nyam nurses. Enti nurses buwiya postings eh wo ho eh be ma m'inyana. Oh nyana eh be viye namo ya postings. Ye be bua businesses. Omo omo ye sa no juma no. So far, ye bua three hundred and five thousand businesses. Three hundred and five thousand. Na ya bua omonisika. Ye oma kano ye wa new policy ayadiaba. A friend of Bizbok, ye di six hundred million Ghana cities etum run by the Ghana Enterprises Agencies. So hairdressers, anase tailors, anase fashions, beauticians. M'inyana carpenters. Na omo hiya se ubeniya access to moneya. Monko Ghana Enterprise Agency. Ye di six hundred million atuho. Na omo pebi amamo. Namwa bebuamo. Namwa ya mojuman no. Six hundred million. Two months ago, amiko lonchi sa program no. Enti monemo business associations. Monko Ghana Enterprise Agencies. Na ombuamo with credit, with soft loans. Namwa atumiye ye juma. Ne obiye eh ye ne hunfaso. We yenyana chresi. Mudi tumi no mamia. Meti miya buamo. I am the man for the future of Ghana. My opponent is the man for the past of Ghana. Ono mudi tumi no manoa. Oh ba for four years. No accountability. Mede ya me ba me ba for eight years. After four years, pesamba biu. And I'll be accountable to you. Pesamba biu. Ono ba osi oko honeymoon. Oko honeymoon no wiya muhunu biu. Mede ya mube humu biu. Pesamba. Monfatu mi no mamie. Meda moa si. Yame shira m'inyana. Ba ko ba ko ba ko. DJ. Programi ya life. Our service and nimdia FM. Ya damasi. Go yo. Ya damasi. Ya damasi ye beyinti. Ye beyinti ya damasi. Time uniti. Time uniti. Ye running out of time. Ye be swa. Na ya bo ye closing prayer. Iti go. DJ, DJ, DJ.
Well, that was the Vice President of the Republic of Ghana, who happens to be the flag bearer of the new Patriotic Party. And he just finished addressing the youth at the Sunyane Technical University. You can tell how excited they were. The nurses were happy about the allowances. He shared his fishing, solar, electric vehicles. You know, these salient points that he's been passing across, which is the key messages we're bringing to you right here on ABC News Ghana. But earlier, we did have some interviews. Let's go take a look at that.
Alright, so it is still our extensive coverage of Vice President and flag bearer of the new Patriotic Party, Dr. Mahmud Baomia Stor of the Western, sorry, of the Bono region here in Sunyane. I have with me here some youth and some student. As he's, we are waiting his arrival to engage the youth within the Bono region. So I have with me here a student from the Calhake University here in Sunyane. And another student who is from the Sunyane Nursing Training College. And will be speaking to issues that concern them and what they want to see the Vice President address when he officially takes the podium here in Sunyane at the Sunyane Technical University. Miss, you are welcome.
Thank you.
What's your name?
Hega.
Okay, so Hega is with the Sunyane Nursing Training College. And your name is?
Amestambo Farmisa.
Esther is with the Calhake University. So let me start with you. What are some issues that you want to see the Vice President touch on? Especially issues around nursing training that we want to see him touch on when he mounts the podium here today?
After the NCC, it takes long for them to post press. So we want Dr. Mahmud Baomia to change it for us. Yeah.
So you have issues around posting when you complete the Nursing College?
Right now, nursing is very expensive. Yeah.
How expensive?
Yeah, the school fees and other stuffs. Okay, so you will go to school and spend three, just three months. And you will pay almost four thousand for every semester. Yeah, so if you don't have money, you can't afford it.
But that's why they introduced the allowance, nursing training and teacher training allowances. To at least help you guys and subsidize the cost that you have.
It's not coming.
The allowance is not so forthcoming. So in all, what do you want the Vice President to say or do in these areas?
We want the allowance to come. And after the NCC SS, we want him to change them. That long period for them to post press. We want him to change it, yeah.
Let me come to you. You are with a university, but you also studied nursing. What are some concerns that you want to see the Vice President? Not necessarily nursing related. Any concern for the youth of this country and the youth in Bono region?
Um, I would like to also use this opportunity to commend the government for how far they've done. Because before they, this government, that is from 2016, they inherited a backlog from 2013 batch. And they've done a commendable job. But most of the youth are not aware of these issues. They've posted up to 2019 as we are talking right now. So if not for the backlog, by now, no nurse will be at home. But the main concern is the fees. Those of us in the private universities is not easy at all. Sometimes you can't even even get a classroom and everything. And aside that, you'll be paying deals of school fees. And they will just attribute it to the fact that you attended a private university. By the end of the day, you are coming to work for the government of Ghana. So that's why if they can have a policies, that can also take into account the private university students also.
So basically, you are talking about reducing the fees or at least government taking part or cost, part of the fees that are private.